Good evening and welcome to the May 17, 2016 San Bruno Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Biassoti.
Here.
Vice Chair Calleal.
Present.
Commissioner Chase. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson will lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Items through -- communications, item two.
Chair Biassoti, there are no additional communications this evening.
Thank you. Item three, this is a section in the meeting where there's comments that are not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring forward to the commission that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. Item four, conflicts of interest. Anyone?
None.
No? Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item five, Conductive Business Capital Improvement Budget A. Request for an adoption for resolution confirming the 2016-2021 five-year capital improvement program. Staff, please.
Chair Biassoti, I'd like to do a brief introduction tonight. Mark Sullivan, our long-range planning manager, will present the report. As we've done in the past, the intent really is that we're presenting to you the new capital improvement program projects that are coming forward, being recommended by staff for this coming budget, this coming year's fiscal budget. And the intent of the Planning Commission is to evaluate these projects as to whether they're in conformance with the city's general plan. The Planning Commission is not looking at the budgetary aspects of these projects, simply looking at these projects in terms of, do the projects forward and support policies in the city's general plan? In Mark Sullivan's staff report, he's gone through these proposed projects, he's analyzed them, and he's making a recommendation as to their conformity with the general plan. So that's the focus of tonight's presentation. And with that, Mark, could you proceed, please?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. State law requires that the Planning Commission review capital improvement programs in the every year's fiscal, every fiscal year budget for conformity with the city's general plan. And you've done this on an annual basis, so you've already approved the ongoing projects which appear in the CIP. So we're only looking at the new projects. And some of these are, I mean, they're really all ongoing programs, but they're projects that are budgeted for this coming year or even for the next five years because the capital budget is a fiscal year 2016-17 budget for the coming year, and it's also a five-year budget which looks at how the projects might maybe be coming forward in the next five years within those programs. So as you know, the general plan is a long-range, comprehensive vision for the physical development of the city, and it has individual elements that provide the policy framework for capital projects. The CIP projects are, in this budget, are designed to protect, preserve, and enhance the city's infrastructure and extend the useful life of public facilities and improve or enhance city services. In this year's CIP, the new projects fall under the following divisions or departments. There's their water capital projects, wastewater capital projects, stormwater capital projects, cable TV, parks and facilities, and streets. And as I mentioned, you've already approved the ongoing projects that will appear in the CIP budget. So staff has reviewed the CIP for conformity with the general plan and determined that the projects proposed in the updated CIP during this fiscal year conform to the city's general plan. And your action tonight is, as David mentioned, only to determine whether the projects are in conformance with the general plan or not. And then following Planning Commission review, the CIP would be forwarded to the City Council where a formal decision would be made on the projects and the budget. And your staff report includes brief descriptions of all of the projects and staff's rationale for finding the projects in conformity with the general plan. And additional information is provided as an attachment to the resolution. So as I mentioned, we're, there are 16 individual new projects. They fall within six different programs, and I will just briefly, very briefly, go through them. In the water capital, there's a project to design and construct, the antiquated regulating station at Arbor Court. There's planning, design, and construction and installation of replacement sewer mains along various streets, mostly in the east side of the city. There's a design and rehabilitation of Sneath Lane and Lake Drive pump stations, and there's maintenance and repairs for all five city water wells. The rationale for general plan conformity is pretty straightforward. There, although there are several here, the main policy is to ensure that the city's water supply systems are adequate to serve the city's present and anticipated needs and that water conservation is implemented in all residences and businesses. Under the wastewater capital, there are two projects. One is a design and construction management for replacement sewer main segments that are identified as priorities in the sewer master plan. And the other is the construction of the spyglass pump station, which will begin this year. And the rationale for that project is, again, to ensure that the city's wastewater collection and treatment systems are adequate to serve the present anticipated needs, are safe and are environmentally sound. In the stormwater capital, there are two projects. One is to complete a feasibility analysis for construction of a detention basin located in Crestmore Canyon. And this is a really interesting project, which is designed to alleviate flooding impacts in the lower area of San Bruno by retaining storm runoff upstream. It would also eliminate the need for significant expenses for pipeline projects that would be needed if this did not take place. The second project is the design and installation of approximately 360 trash capture devices inside storm drain inlets, and this meets California Regional Water Quality Control Board and San Mateo County Stormwater Municipal Regional Permit requirements. The rationale for these projects is to retain, well, one of them is to retain existing open space areas that serve as detention ponds in order to retain stormwater, recharge aquifers, and prevent flooding. And the other one is covered in various areas. One of them is to preserve wetland habitat in the San Francisco Bay margins because that's where a lot of the solid sort of refuse ends up. Under the cable capital, there's one project which is basically producing annual system upgrades, including capacity upgrades on the current plant, replacement of equipment, and preventative measures to ensure that the system is up as much as possible. And the rationale for that is to continue to grow core video business while deploying and promoting new services, which requires continuous upgrades. Then under the parks and facilities capital, there are three projects. The first is in the Crestmore neighborhood area, and that's part of a larger Crestmore replacement and reconstruction of infrastructure that was damaged in the 2010 PG&E gas main explosion and fire. And as you know, that involves, that's a complex and, you know, comprehensive upgrades and replacement of streets, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, storm drainage and other, and all the infrastructure systems essentially. But this specifically would fund the development of a master plan for the Earl and Glenview Park, and the park will include areas for play, socializing, walking pathways, and that planning is expected to go through this year and with an anticipated completion of construction in 2017. The second project is the Florida Avenue Park. As you know, the city acquired the property in 2015, and this project would plan and design the neighborhood park. It would also strive to retain historic architectural elements from the existing home that was there that has some very interesting architectural features. There would be children's play equipment, and there would also be areas for people to gather and relax in a neighborhood park. And the third project is police plaza security enhancements. This project would design and install security improvements in the joint San Francisco BART Police Station. It would include installing security gates and fences to separate and protect employee vehicles, which are now exposed there at the bottom floor of the BART garage, and they're not protected. And the second one would be to update and replace outdated security cameras and access control systems. The rationale for the conformity finding there is that in the open space and recreation element is to strive to locate neighborhood parks, facilities within one-third walking distance of all residences in San Bruno, and that's an area that blocks a nearby park. And additionally, in the public facilities element, provide adequate public safety services for all San Bruno residents, including police protection, fire protection, and emergency management. The final area is the streets capital, and that includes four projects. One is to replace approximately 680 structurally deficient street light poles. That's out of over 2,100 that are in the city, so that's a large number of light poles. Many of them are very, they're 60 to 80 years old and in need of repair or replacement. The second is the pavement management program. This is an ongoing project, and as, I won't go into any details because I don't understand all that well either, but the pavement condition index for the city, which is on a range of 1 to 100, the average score for San Bruno is 64, and the target is 70. So there are ongoing pavement improvements to move us towards that goal. And also, it's cost-effective because the longer you wait, the more expensive it is to repair roadways. The third project is to install traffic signal priority control systems, and this would enable emergency vehicles to override the intersection lights and activate momentary right-of-way for emergency vehicles to get through an intersection. And the last project is pedestrian crosswalk and safety improvements, and this would be to design and construct pedestrian warning systems to enhance safety by reducing crashes, well, conflicts, I would put it, between vehicles and pedestrians at unsignalized intersections and mid-block pedestrian crossings. And the locations for these have not been determined. They will be determined based on discussions with Police Department Traffic Safety and Parking Committee and the San Bruno Community Foundation. So the conformance, the general plan conformance rationale for that is to install safety improvements for pedestrian crossings, and there's actually five or six policies that directly relate to improving the street system and safety and emergency access. So that concludes all of the projects, and I think it's fairly evident that they're all very necessary to the functioning of the city. And they all fall within the general plan sort of program for, or goals for maintaining infrastructure and services in San Bruno to meet the city's needs. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone? Mark, I do have one. If you could speak just a little bit to the Crestmore Canyon project, because it's kind of unusual and it's new, and it's something the folks at home probably haven't heard about, so maybe if you can give them just a little bit more detail on that.
Yeah, well, the, what I know about this project is that it is a, it's to develop a master plan, so it's to investigate creating a retention pond that would capture, absorb the flow because Crestmore Canyon is, you know, is a sort of collection point for a lot of water coming off the hills to the west, and reduce the amount of water that would be, you know, that would end up flowing into the stormwater system, control it better. And I don't know if David has anything additional to?
You know, I think that's a good overview. Fundamentally, the idea really is to detain water upstream so that we minimize flooding impacts that may occur downstream in our downtown area in the lower San Bruno area. So fundamentally, that's the objective of that proposed project. And we have prepared, as you see in your packet, a resolution for your consideration to basically take an action indicating that you find these proposed projects in conformance with the city's general plan. So I would encourage you to review that resolution, and if you agree with staff's recommendation, to adopt that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other comments for staff? All right, then we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on these? Okay. Public comment is closed. And do we have a motion or a?
It's a roll call vote?
Yes.
So I move that, we move this, does this go to City Council for?
Yes, this is a recommendation to?
It's a recommendation to City Council.
Yeah.
Move that we, that we move this, adopt the resolution, and move it forward to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second. It's a roll call vote, I believe.
Chair Biassoti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Calleal.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item B 406, 418 San Mateo Avenue.
Thank you and good evening. The applicant has applied for an extension of a conditional use permit, parking exception, and architectural review permit for the plaza project located at 406-418 San Mateo Avenue. The plaza project is an approved mixed-use development that would contain 83 residential units, approximately 6,975 square feet of commercial space, and 106 parking spaces and a subgrade garage. As a recall, the plaza project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission and ultimately approved by the City Council. City Council approval included a general plan amendment, an amendment to the transit corridors plan, a zoning code text amendment, a conditional use permit, parking exception, and an architectural review permit. The general plan amendment and the transit corridors plan amendment went into effect immediately after the October 28, 2014 City Council meeting, and the associated ordinance for the zoning code text amendment went into effect on December 25 of 2014, which was 30 days after the second reading. What's important to note is that a condition of approval was included stating that the conditional use permit, parking exception, and architectural review permit shall expire if a building permit is not obtained within one year of the effective date of the associated ordinance. Therefore, a building permit would have had to have been issued by December 25 of 2015. However, San Bruno municipal code allows the Planning Commission to extend the conditional use permit, parking exception, and architectural review permit for up to one year. In November of 2015, the applicant requested a six-month extension, which was granted by the Planning Commission. Based on the six-month extension granted by the Planning Commission, a building permit must be issued by June 25 of 2016. The applicant has worked very closely with staff over the last few months regarding a number of plan submissions. In fact, as we speak, staff is actively reviewing improvement plans, which cover all proposed improvements within the public right-of-way. We're also reviewing shoring, de-watering, and excavation plans, as well as construction documents for the foundation, the garage, and the overall structure. At this point, staff does not anticipate completing our review and issuing a building permit by the June 25, 2016 deadline. Therefore, the applicant has requested an additional six-month extension. Based on the proposed six-month extension, a building permit would now have to be issued by December 25 of 2016. The applicant anticipates obtaining a building permit by August of 2016, which would be within that six-month extension period. Overall, staff is supportive of the six-month extension and would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolutions, which are included as Exhibit B and Exhibit C within your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for staff?
Yep, to the chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Matt, under the analysis portion of your report, and maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but halfway through the paragraph, it says ultimately, "The applicant must obtain a building permit and complete substantial work in reliance on that permit by December 25, 2016 if the six-month extension is granted." So what you're saying tonight is you're not going to have it ready by June 25, so they'll get a later start date, and I can't imagine that by December 25, they will have substantial work completed. So is, if I'm reading, that's what I'm, that's how I'm reading it. So if I'm wrong, let me know, and if I'm right, maybe we can rewrite this to, somehow we can take the word substantial out of there.
So the resolution before you tonight would approve an additional six-month extension. Based on the language within the resolution, the applicant must obtain a building permit by December 25 of 2016 and also complete substantial, complete work in reliance on that building permit. Really, what we're looking for is vertical construction, so the garage foundation and the garage walls coming up, which is achievable by December 25 of 2016.
Okay, but in terms, so that's how I read it, but in terms of the overall project, vertical wood or vertical sticks, in my world, doesn't mean substantial completion. And I just want it, if I'm right, I just want to make it so that we don't bind this in any way, shape, or form.
Through the chair, if I could. Commissioner Samut, in terms of that portion of the staff report under analysis, I think Matt is referring to the prior extension and when it expires. As we look forward, what we're anticipating is that the applicant would likely secure a permit in August of this year. And the substantial work that would essentially give with the six-month extension that Matt's recommending tonight until basically the end of this year, from August to the end of this year to do substantial construction. We would anticipate that occurring, and in terms of substantial, what does that mean? It really means that they're putting in the foundation, the garage, and they initiate vertical construction, initiate. That's substantial. What we're looking for is that they not only pull the building permit during this proposed, requested six-month extension, they pull the permit during that period, and they really commit to the project in terms of construction activity. To us, that's not just preparing the site, that's putting in the foundation and beginning vertical construction. We've had quite a few conversations with the development team. We fully expect that that level of work will be done well in advance of the six-month requested extension.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that there's not going to be any issue with the verbiage in this.
We don't believe there will be. We've had extensive conversations, so I think there's, and the applicant's representatives are here this night, this evening, and they will provide a brief presentation, so you can ask them. But I think we have a clear understanding and an understanding that they will be able to perform under this requested extension.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
May I also briefly speak to this issue? Regardless of what's in the staff report, my reading of the actual be-it resolved on the resolution wording doesn't necessarily create that firm binder on the substantial work issue. It's simply on the extension for the obtaining, the obtaining of the building permit. It doesn't actually include the substantial work language in the be-it resolved. So I don't think we're going to have the problem that you were concerned about.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to speak on this? The applicant, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Peter Dunn. I'm representing San Bruno Plaza LLC and Saris Regis Group tonight. Thank you very much for your consideration this evening, and I want to thank Matt for his report. I'll just add a little more flavor to what we've been doing over the last six months. Matt gave a pretty good assessment of the progress that we've made. So not only, not only are we in for a second round of building permit plan check, and incidentally, that's a, that package is about 400 sheets thick, and there's another specification book that's just as thick as well, so there's a substantial amount of work that goes into permitting a project like this. We are also in for final approvals for the civil improvements and the landscape, the sidewalk and the streetscape work. That's, should be pretty close to being approved by the city at this point. We've also submitted shoring and excavation plans. The shoring has been a very complex riddle to solve for us. There's a lot of groundwater underneath that site, and we want to make sure that we've done it right. We have consulted thoroughly on the subject, and we feel confident that the plan that we've submitted to the city will be, will be able to execute it very successfully, and it will facilitate the rest of the construction of the project. We also have all of our PG&E approvals in place for the project, so that's a substantial body of work. PG&E takes a long time for them to approve designs, and we're ready to go on that front. We also have a Caltrans encroachment permit that's been issued. Took us eight months to get that permit, but we now have that in hand so we can, the very first piece of work that we need to do is reliant on that permit, so that was a critical piece of the puzzle to get that in place. In addition, Caltrans had a signal cabinet located partially on the project site that needed to be relocated in order for us to start our shoring, and that work's been accomplished as well. Finally, we've received permits from the city of South San Francisco, who runs the sewer treatment plant, as well as from San Mateo County Health to discharge groundwater. We're working with the city on final details of that plan, but that will allow us to excavate the basement and to move forward with the project, so those were key approvals as well. So as you can tell, we're down to finalizing the building permit right now. We're working closely with staff. We're very optimistic that we can have a permit issued by late summer, and at which time we would immediately commence work and proceed in a diligent process, diligent fashion to build the building. Thank you very much for your consideration and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair.
Mr. Smith?
Sorry I was late, but anyway, that being what it is, with this extension, and if you're looking to get the work started or, you know, get the substantial amount completed, you already then have your subcontractors lined up. you already then have your subcontractors lined up in line or whatever, or how's that whole process working?
Sure, we're actually, one of the things that we've been doing, and they've been at city meetings, is we're working with a general contractor, Johnston Moyer Incorporated, very well, very experienced in this type of product, in this type of building, and they've been at the table with us for, I'd say, almost a year now, working very closely with us on all the myriad of details that go into a project like this. They were very helpful in terms of the shoring design, and a lot of the other, just the, you know, the tons of details that go into this project. So they're at the table, they're with us, and they'll be ready to go when everything comes together.
So that's your general contractor?
Correct.
That's Johnson, where are they located? Where are they at?
They're based out of San Carlos.
Okay. So are they going to then be doing, you know, the shoring themselves, or do you know, are they going to be?
Well, they have a subcontractor, they subcontract everything out. The shoring design is a company called American Drilling, and they too have been at the table for probably six to eight months now, if not longer. And the shoring design, including a structural design, structural calculations, have all been provided by American Drilling through the general contractor, and that's what the city's reviewing right now. So it's actually the group that's going to do the actual work has done the design, completed the design to get going.
One more question along those lines. As far as being in contact with the San Mateo County Building Trades, have you guys been in contact with them as far as, you know, local contractors, local union contractors, or anything like that?
Saris Regis Group does a lot of different projects around the area, around the bay, and they have a very good relationships with the building trades, so I'm not privy to what sort of conversations they might have had, but I'm sure there have been some.
Okay, thank you.
Good answer.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this one tonight? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll move the conversation back to the commission for motion or comment.
Through the chair, please acknowledge and note that you have two resolutions for action tonight on this item.
Thank you, David. Yes, there are two items. Do we need to make a motion individually for those?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we're looking for two motions.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
I guess if nobody else is going to say anything, I'll chime in. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2016-06. It's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno approving a six-month extension of the expiration period for the conditional use permit and parking exception for the mixed-use development located at 406-418 San Mateo Avenue. APN 020-364-320, 020-364, 120, 020-364, 130, and 020-364-140. I think that covers the first resolution, does it not?
Thank you, Commissioner. And do we have a second?
Through the chair, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is this a roll call also, David?
Yes, please.
All right.
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kayal?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Semet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hello, sorry, do I, oh, do I get a vote?
Yes, Commissioner Chase. Thank you.
Okay, and on the second part of the resolution, do we have a motion?
I'll move through the chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-07, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno approving a six-month extension of the expiration period for the architectural review permit for the mixed-use development located at 406-418 San Mateo Avenue.
Thank you. And do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call vote once again, please, David.
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kayal?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Semet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, public hearings, Item 6A, Caltrans property at the northwest corner of San Bruno Avenue and Glendale Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you. As indicated, the item before you tonight is a temporary use permit request to allow the continued use of an off-site construction staging area within the Crestmore neighborhood. Site itself is located on the northwest corner of San Bruno Avenue and Glenview Drive, and the site is owned by the State of California. As the commission is aware, the rebuilding of the infrastructure within the Crestmore neighborhood has been ongoing since the explosion and fire. The subject site has been used for staging to support the ongoing infrastructure improvements within the Crestmore neighborhood. Those improvements include replacement of underground utilities, repair and replacement of street sidewalk and streetlights, and the replacement of the Earl Glenview Park. The San Bruno Municipal Code allows construction staging areas lasting up to one-year periods. And as you'll recall, the Planning Commission approved a number of temporary use permits to accommodate the ongoing infrastructure improvements within the Crestmore neighborhood. And if you turn to Exhibit D within your staff report, this provides an overview of the two storage yards that have been approved over the years. You have Storage Yard Number One and Storage Yard Number Two. Storage Yard Number One is the southernmost storage yard, which is located closest to San Bruno Avenue. And I'll just give a brief history of the actions that have taken place over the last few years. In April of 2012, the Planning Commission originally approved a temporary use permit for the area referred to as Storage Yard Number One. One year later, in April of 2013, the original temporary use permit was extended for an additional year. A few months after that, in June of 2013, the Planning Commission approved a temporary use permit to expand the construction staging area to include the area referred to as Storage Yard Number Two. In May of 2014, the Planning Commission approved a request to extend the temporary use permit for Storage Yard Number One and Storage Yard Number Two for an additional year. And in April of 2015, the Planning Commission approved a temporary use permit to extend the use of Storage Yard Number One and Storage Yard Number Two for an additional year. The current application before the commission tonight is to use Storage Yard Number Two for an additional year. At this point, there's no more need to use Storage Yard Number One. The ongoing infrastructure improvements are anticipated to last throughout 2016 and into 2017. Given the schedule of these infrastructure improvements, staff anticipated having to return to the Planning Commission for renewal of the temporary use permit. The same conditions of approval will go forward with this current application. I would like to point out one condition of approval, and that's condition of approval number five, which requires the applicant to maintain the construction staging area in a clean and orderly condition. Additionally, any trash, dirt, and debris shall be cleaned and removed on a daily basis and cannot be stored on-site. Right now, the two sites are vacant, and they are clean. However, there is a portion of the fence that has fallen down on Storage Yard Number Two, and staff has coordinated with the project manager regarding this issue, and that will be addressed shortly. Overall, staff supports the temporary use permit request and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the temporary use permit, subject to the findings and conditions of approval within the staff report. That concludes my staff presentation. The project manager, Harry Burrows, is also in attendance tonight and will also provide a brief update on the overall infrastructure improvements within the Crestmore neighborhood. We'd also be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. And as Matt described, there's been a tremendous amount of work that has occurred up in the neighborhood to date, and we can see the finish line now, which is great news. Most of the work that's occurred to date has been underground, so you can't really see the fruits of our labor, so to speak. This upcoming project is going to be the replacement of the curb gutter sidewalk, rebuilding of the streets, and replacement of the streetlight system within the neighborhood. We actually opened bids for this project last Thursday, and we're scheduled to go to city council this coming Tuesday with the word of the contract. So we're hoping to get this construction project underway here very shortly. This will be the last major portion of work within the neighborhood. The additional project beyond this, that actually Mark described in his presentation earlier, is the replacement of the Earl Glenview Park in the neighborhood. That process, or that project right now is in the planning process. It's anticipated to go into final design later this year with construction occurring in 2017, probably be completed toward the latter part of 2017. And hopefully, at that point in time, all the reconstruction within the neighborhood itself will have been completed. And as Matt described, in terms of the two storage yards, the item in front of you this evening, the smaller one, which is the one that's closer to San Bruno Avenue, that storage yard, we are going to be demolishing here with this next contract. It's written into the contract that the contractor will remove the existing fences and clean up that entire corner. The entire site where both of these storage yards are, are actually subleased to us by Church of the Highlands, and they lease those sites from Caltrans. Church of the Highlands is looking toward doing a small beautification project on that corner, planting some trees and other things to help beautify that, you know, entrance into the neighborhood and into the city of San Bruno. The larger storage yard, as Matt described, was supposed to be more temporary in nature, but given its size and given the complexity of this next project, we've decided that that's where we're going to stage the contractor's work. Again, we've written into this contract that the contractor will go in, clean up that storage yard, straighten the fences in a more permanent nature. At the completion of his work, also in his contract, is to remove that storage yard, clean up the site, do hydroseeding, and leave it hopefully in better condition than we found it in when we inherited it. So with that, I'm open to any additional questions that you may have related to the rebuilding of the Crestmore neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Nope? Okay, so we'll move it back to the commission for comment or vote.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smoot?
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission approves temporary use permit 16-002, based on findings of fact one through three and conditions of approval one through 13.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Item B, 659 Huntington Avenue, it's a request for a use permit to allow the installation of an approximately 24-by-60 temporary modular building within the parking lot of Artichoke Joe's. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. We have before you a use permit to allow the installation of a temporary modular building within the parking lot to house and administrative offices for the gaming operations associated with Artichoke Joe's casino. The applicant is proposing to place a temporary modular building measuring approximately 24-by-60 in the parking lot adjacent to the permanent building to house up to 10 employees. Artichoke Joe's had to hire additional employees due to recent state and federal regulations that require additional staff to administer. Presently, there is not enough room in the existing building on the site to house these additional 10 staff people, and it will take some time for Artichoke Joe's to develop a more permanent solution to the space problem. Permanent solutions to the space shortage include constructing in addition to the existing building or purchasing another property to house the administrative functions of the casino. The casino currently operates with 40 gaming tables, and the proposed project would not result in any additional gaming tables being added. The placement of the temporary building would result in the temporary occupation of nine parking spaces in the parking lot, and the placement of the building would comply with all development standards for the district. The applicant is requesting to maintain the building on the site for a period not to exceed two years. During this period, the applicant will develop a long-term solution to the casino's space needs for these employees. The finite time period also ensures the city that the building will not become a permanent fixture on the site. Pursuant to the conditions of approval, after two years, the applicant would need to submit a new use permit request to retain the structures for the commissioner's consideration. Otherwise, the structure would need to be removed from the site. The conditions of approval would further require the building to be detailed in such a manner so that it is more compatible with the character of the central business district. Staff sent a legal notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and no comments have been received. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the use permit request based upon findings one through three and conditions of approval one through 12, as outlined in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? We'll open up the public comment, and you can speak on your project, please.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Leslie. I work for Artichoke Joe's. I'm an architect that worked there for 26 years, if you can believe that or not. So, I mean, everything that was explained is what we're trying to accomplish. We have several options, looking at additions or acquiring land, or even using existing buildings that we have adjacent to Artichoke Joe's. We have a history of using some modulators. In 2007, we utilized some temporary modulators when we remodeled the employee lounge, and back in 1991, we actually used modulators when we were doing an addition to the card room. So we're, and they were all done in the same area, in that one parking area that you see on your maps. So, but they are out of room. If you've ever been there, it's a very tight space, and all these federal and state laws that have just bombarded them has just created this space that they're out of. So we needed immediate kind of solution while we look and accomplish what we want to do for the long term. So if I'm here, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smoot?
Mr. Leslie, have you read and agree with all the conditions of approval on this project?
We have, I think it's a two-year term, and there are some bonds that are supposed to be submitted after the two years.
Well, yeah, specifically, condition of approval eight regarding windows?
Oh, yes.
Window awnings?
Yeah, in fact, do they, Michael, do they have the current drawings that we submitted? Okay, so, yes, they're, from the original submittal that we did, that was one of the conditions of approval, and then since then, we made a revision, which you probably have, that shows the windows in the front.
Okay, so you agree with them?
Oh, yes.
All right.
Yeah, and I checked with the, the first thing I did was talk to the modular company, and they said they're pretty loose about doing whatever we want done. So they said we can easily put the windows there, we can relocate doors. They weren't going to do the awnings, so we're doing that one ourselves, but that's not a big deal to us, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public here who'd like to speak on this item? No? Okay. Once again, we'll move it back to the commission for comment or vote.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smoot?
No, go right ahead, Commissioner Smoot.
Well, there are no questions, and I'd like to make the motion that we approve use permit 16-007, based on findings one through three and conditions of approval one through 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved, and I guess there's a 10-day appeal period on that as well. Okay. Good luck. Item C, 1150 El Camino Real, Suite 245. It's a request for a use permit to allow alcoholic beverage sales with a type 40 ABC license in conjunction with an arcade. ABC license in conjunction with an arcade. Staff report, please, Michael.
Yeah, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. Commissioners, you have before you a request for a use permit to sell alcoholic beverages with a type forty ABC license in conjunction with an arcade doing business as Gamma Ride Incorporated, located in the shops at Tanforan. The commercial space is located on the upper floor near the internal entrance to Target. Gamma Ride Incorporated previously operated an arcade with an ABC license in Belmont, California. As part of the city's review process, we contacted the police department down there and determined that there weren't any nuisance problems associated with this particular arcade and the ABC license. The use includes a small dining area at the front of the arcade, which sells snacks to patrons, and it also has two flat-screen TVs. It's within this area that they want to provide beer to patrons, and it would only be in this area of the commercial space. The requested use permit would permit the operator to sell beer within this space in conjunction with, with the snacks, but no wine or spirits. Gamma Ride Incorporated is an arcade that caters to kids, mostly tweens and teens and their families, similar to a Chuck E. Cheese, but for older kids. Staff sent a legal notice to all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property, and no comments were received. Because Gamma Ride was operated in a nearby community without becoming a nuisance and is aimed at kids and their families, it would close at nine PM when the shopping center closes. And finally, because it would only sell beer, staff feels comfortable in recommending approval of the request pursuant to findings one through five and conditions of approval one through twelve in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Michael. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Please.
Michael, are there any other establishments other than BJ's that sell alcohol on the premise of Tanforan?
I, I believe there are. I don't know all of them offhand. I think Hooters may be one as well.
That's right. Well, the restaurants.
Yeah.
I know, aside from the restaurants.
Okay.
Are there any others, any feedback or any, any concerns to, to be aware of?
There's none other that I'm aware of, other than Target, which is an off-sale type of license, yeah.
Thank you.
And through the chair, Michael, you may want to talk about the feedback you received from the police department on this application.
Yes, the police department did review the application. They reached out to the Belmont Police Department as well, where the operator previously operated the arcade and also had a, an ABC license there as well. And there were no nuisance, nuisances associated with or calls to service for, for this particular operator, so he seems to be running a very good operation.
Give her the feedback.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smoot.
Michael, in Mr. Yavari's letter, he states that in Belmont, they served both beer and wine. Is there a particular reason why they're not going to be serving wine in San Bruno?
According to the ABC license for which they requested, it only allows beer. So I stuck with the requirements of that license in determining what they would be able to sell. Because if they're requesting a license that only allows them to sell beer, then that's essentially what they get approved for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public comment, and is the applicant here? Would you step to the podium and tell us about your project?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sohail Teherian. I'm the general manager at Gamma Ride Inc. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Jose Yavari, the applicant, who is sitting right there. As Mr. Smith has mentioned, we were previously located in Belmont, where we had our arcade for approximately two years, and we had a type forty-one license over there for beer and wine. There were no incidents over there. We made, we made sure to always maintain an area of safety and comfort among the families. Our primary goal is to create an arcade and an environment where families feel safe first and foremost and have fun. And we always keep an eye on all patrons who are consuming their alcohol. We make sure to limit them so that they do not overexceed a certain amount. ID every single person who comes to purchase alcohol from us. And now in our new location in Tanforan, we're going for a type forty to kind of clarify the difference. In our Belmont location, we had a fully stocked snack bar with a kitchen, and the type forty-one on sale beer and wine is for restaurants, so with a kitchen, that they would be able to sell beer and wine. In our space in Tanforan, one of the restrictions in our lease agreement states that we cannot have a kitchen where we would sell food so that, to not create any competition with the food court and other vendors that are currently in the shopping center. So because of the lack of kitchen space, we would have to apply for a type forty on sale, strictly beer, no wine or spirits. Gamma Ride Arcade is a, an arcade that primarily has high-tech simulation rising games, three-D experiences, things that you would normally find in like a Universal Studios or a Disneyland type of area. The type of space that we have created is a place where families can come to have a good time, to have safe, complete, high-tech fun, places where if they may not necessarily be able to afford a trip to Disneyland or Universal Studios, to be able to come have that same experience with more value for their money that they're spending in a local We pride ourselves in the environment that we have created. The feedback that we have gotten from our customers has been incredibly positive. We get a lot of people coming who say, man, it's about time you guys opened up an arcade here. We've been waiting for this for so long. And on a more personal level, I myself grew up in San Bruno until I was about seven or eight years old, grew up in Peninsula Place just off of Cherry Avenue. So I remember Tanforan pre-remodeling the, the little arcade in the downstairs of the United Artists Theater that was pretty much empty all the time. So for me, having seen that and experienced that as a young child, now to be fully grown and now working at an arcade that is placed in that same mall in this capacity and bringing in the sort of enjoyment to the citizens of this town, it really brings a lot of joy to me, and we hope to continue to create that same experience for years to come. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair. Just because I do have a little bit of concern regarding the repeated nuisance activities and police interventions part of the municipal code, can you just go into a little bit more detail about your IDing policy, just to make sure that we're not going to run into an issue of selling alcohol to minors and so on and so forth?
On our registers, we have written the date and the year where everything from, for example, today's date in nineteen ninety-five. From this date past, they are over the age of twenty-one, and it is safe to sell alcohol to them. Anyone past that cannot be sold alcohol. We have trained all of our employees to ID everyone, no matter what the age, no matter what the personal appearance of the customer may be. We ID everyone just to make sure that there is never an issue of an accidental selling to minors or a conflict of interest where that would occur.
Can I answer your question? Okay. Anyone else?
I do. Well, I encourage that at my age, I get carded. I might get scolded every day to get it feel good. I see that you're going to be providing some opportunities for parties as well, and it's not uncommon when parties, whether it's a birthday party or what event it might be, that parents bring in their own items. You know, they bring in their cakes, they bring whatever it may be. How can you control what might be taking place from, you know, alcohol to minors or food that you're indicating that you're not able to serve food there that takes place? What are the restrictions or what are your policies around that dining party room?
As far as the dining policy goes for birthday parties, it is listed in our agreement and agreed with the shops at Tanforan, that we encourage all customers who come in and book parties with us to purchase food from the food court or from the restaurants located within there and bring those to the party. Soft drinks and cake is not restricted. They can bring those from any outside area. And as far as alcoholic beverages are concerned, we, in our policies, we will be stating that customers will not be allowed to bring in their own alcoholic beverages. Though we do have a type forty license that permits the sale of alcohol on the premises, they cannot bring their own, and that it must be purchased from us in order so that we can regulate and make sure that there are no alcohol given to minors and no issues with that occurring.
So if someone wants to bring it in and they want to ask for corkage opportunities?
Well, we won't be selling wine or spirits, so we probably won't even have a corkscrew there to be able to open for them.
But your answer would be?
We would not allow that, no. We would ask them to return it back to their vehicle or take it, remove it from the premises and express our, sorry, say sorry that we cannot accommodate you, but that is our policy.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. I do have one final question. Also, as regards to issues of people, you know, becoming intoxicated, are your employees going to be trained to look out for signs of people who need to be cut off?
Absolutely. All previous employees who were with us at our Belmont location have already been trained to be aware and to keep an eye out for those patrons who have purchased and are consuming the alcoholic beverages, to make sure that it does not get out of hand. And all new employees have also been trained on this matter as well.
So I have a question. What's the delivery system, bottles, cans, tab? What are you looking at?
Bottles. We purchase them all, we stock them in our freezer, pop the cap, boom, boom, on that, serve it to them, that's all. And we have signs posted everywhere within our facility, and we mentioned to all of our patrons that all alcoholic beverages purchased must be consumed within our premises and cannot be taken outside into the mall area or anywhere outside. And so we are keeping an eye on that to make sure that that does not happen.
Thank you. Also, I was looking at your floor plan, and I noticed there's no pump-it-up or DDR machines. Does that not fit your?
No, it's, DDR is one of the machines that we get asked about a lot, and it is something that we've looked into bringing in. So we just recently opened up, it's maybe been just a little over a month now, we are looking into bringing in new things, so yeah, hopefully we will be able to bring in those as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Michael.
I just also wanted to point out condition of approval number ten in response, in response to Commissioner Johnson's concern. And just to, this condition came straight from San Bruno Police Department, the reviewing agency, and that that beer should only be consumed within the dining area. So a patron is not really allowed to walk around and play the games at the same time that they're drinking. They're really supposed to be, according to the condition, in the dining area only, which is about five to six hundred square feet.
Through the chair. Michael, I actually have one quick question for you. I just kind of wanted to bring in, call to mind your condition of approval number five, where we would be having this permit called back if there are problems and negative impacts. Is there going to be kind of a system in place for just keeping an eye on this project just to make sure that we don't have those issues?
We, we definitely can. Whenever, I mean, I frequent the mall on occasion, so when I do, I can definitely stop by just to see how things are going. That's generally going to be during the day. But we respond mostly on a complaint basis, so if we get a call from someone that there's something happening, then, then we would investigate further at that point.
And just to clarify, would San Bruno PD notify you if there had been issues on the property?
That's a good question.
Through the chair, if I could, yes, they would.
Okay.
And I think that we would rely on the PD. They helped us in putting together the conditions of approval. They do have a presence at the mall. They are aware of these conditions of approval. If there's something occurring that is inconsistent with these conditions of approval, they would notify us, and we would initiate a process to bring this back. Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Yeah, just through the chair. We should just let the police department do their work, and we can do ours. How's that?
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? No? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move it back to the commission for comments or motions.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
If nobody has any comments, further comments, I'll make a motion that we approve. Use permit sixteen dash zero zero five, based on findings of fact one through five, conditions of approval one through twelve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved. And I guess there's a ten-day appeal period on that as well. Good luck. Item D, five.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Before you start on the item D, I wanted to point out that I have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I have a property within five hundred feet of this, so I'll be excusing myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Matt Jones, Planning Department staff.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's a request for a use permit to allow alcoholic beverage sales in conjunction with a restaurant per chapters twelve point eight, four point two, ten, and twelve point nine, six point one, two point C, the San Bruno Municipal Code. The applicant is proposing to add a type forty-one ABC license for beer and wine to a new restaurant, Saji Japanese Restaurant. City staff's already approved a building permit for tenant improvements, which was issued on March twenty-fourth of this year. At the existing restaurant, there's, oh, the existing restaurant is a permitted use within the central business district, so Planning Commission approval is only required for the sale of beer and wine. No expansion of building will occur, and no changes are proposed to the exterior of the building. The restaurant area is approximately fourteen ninety-eight square feet with thirty-five seats and contains approximately five hundred eight square feet of dining area. The restaurant will have bar seating, which will serve the same purpose as the restaurant seating, which is to serve both food and drinks. Alcohol sales would be available to, only to diners at the restaurant. Sale of beer, wine, and sake would be conducted in conjunction with the restaurant. Sake is considered wine per section BPC point nine, point one, point two, three, zero, zero, seven of the California Code. If the Planning Commission approves this application, the applicant will also be required to obtain a liquor license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. The hours of operation would be Wednesday through Monday from eleven thirty AM to two PM for lunch and five thirty PM to ten thirty PM for dinner. The police department has also reviewed this application and is not opposed to the application based on the recommended conditions of approval for the project. If any operational issues arise in the future related to this use permit, the community development director has the authority to call the item back to the Planning Commission. Additionally, I wanted to bring your attention to one area, the condition of approval number four. There's a discrepancy between what's stated in the staff report and the applicant's statement. It currently reads, "The hours of operation shall be limited to eleven thirty AM to two PM and five thirty PM to ten thirty PM, Tuesday through Sunday. Any changes from the hours of operation shall require prior authorization of the community development director. Any change that results in a later closing time shall also require review by the police department." My recommendation would be to strike the first sentence to say, quote, "The hours of operation shall be limited to eleven thirty AM to two PM and five thirty PM to ten thirty of operation shall be limited to eleven-thirty AM to ten-thirty PM," end quote. This provides the applicant with the ability to have greater flexibility with his days of operation. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Through the chair. I actually recall reading in the owner's statement that the business will actually be closed on Tuesdays. So I don't know that Tuesday through Sunday, should it not read Monday?
So through the chair, I, with the proposed amendment of condition of approval number four, the sentence would just say, "The hours of operation shall be limited to eleven-thirty AM to ten-thirty PM," which-
Okay, and so we're striking completely Tuesday through Sunday.
Which would strike completely the days of the week.
Excellent. All right, just wanted to clarify.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
Along those same lines, I was kind of thinking that perhaps maybe, you know, if you leave at eleven-thirty to ten-thirty, I mean, if they're closed from two to five-thirty or if it's Tuesday through Sunday or whatever, and he decides he's going to change the hours, wouldn't it be better to have the hours of operation shall be limited to the hours that the restaurant is open? Does that make any, does that make any difference?
It seems like that, through the chair, it seems like that would suffice, I think, the purpose of providing those specific hours. One of the, one of the things listed in the staff report sort of addresses the, how late the business is open having an effect. So, you know, if you were to propose a change in the hours of operation, this sort of puts a cap on the hours to ten-thirty PM, which staff believes contributes to the police department's approval of the project.
Who submitted the hours of operation?
The hours of operation were submitted by the applicant.
Correct. So therefore, if it read, "The hours of operation shall be," well, forget it, it's okay, never mind. We'll go with that.
Through the chair, if I could just clarify, I'm supportive of what the planners indicated here. I think that the only thing I would say is that the hours of operation shall be limited to eleven-thirty AM to ten-thirty PM daily, period. And that's fine. If they operate within those hours, whenever they're open during those hours, that's not an issue for us or the police department. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else with questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak on your project, please? We'll open up the public comment for you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Hiroaki Makiyama. I'm the owner of the new restaurant. I am requesting for use permit to sell beer and wine at my restaurant. This is my first restaurant, but I, my dad is helping me out, which he had a couple restaurants in San Francisco, so he had maybe like twenty years of restaurant experience. So, yeah, that helps a lot. The restaurant will be called Saji at five-two-eight Samotile Avenue. I'll be serving authentic Japanese food from all over the world, vegetable, freshest fish, and, yeah, and a lot of Japanese sake and beer also. So the restaurant will have a bar that will seat around maybe ten to twelve people, the maximum capacity, like thirty-five people. And, yeah, I will be applying for ABC license after this use permit. And the business hour is going to be from eleven-thirty to ten-thirty. And, yeah, I'll be targeting customers that are locals, also everybody from the Bay Area. We have old customers that are already, that already, you know, expressed their intention of becoming a regular customer at my restaurant. And, yeah, we will have, for alcohol, we will have bottle service, which they could save if they don't finish drinking at my restaurant for next, next time they visit. We'll be serving al-sake with glass cups, small bottles, medium-sized bottles. And for beers, we'll have a draft beer, canned beer, bottled beer, which they'll be drinking from glass, glasses also. That concludes my statement. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you. So do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anyone from the public left here to make a comment, so we'll open it and close it. And we'll move the conversation back to the commission for a motion and a vote or comments. And do we want to include the proposed amendment?
Through the chair. I'll move that we approve use permit sixteen dash zero zero two based on findings one through five as amended and conditions of approval one through eighteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved. And there will be a ten-day appeal period before you can finalize your permit. Good luck. All right. City staff discussion.
Through the chair, the staff would just like to bring a couple of things to your attention. One is, we're not anticipating having a need for the June Architecture Review Committee meeting due to the fact that we don't have items coming forward that would be ready. But we are expecting to have two planning commission meetings in June. So in terms of your adjournment tonight, I would appreciate it if you could adjourn your planning commission this evening to June seventh. And we are anticipating having a second meeting in June, June twenty-first. But at the June seventh meeting, we're expecting to bring forward the city's walk and bike plan, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We've been working on that as a community, as a staff, for a number of months now. It's going through review. The public review drafts are out. I believe you have copies of those, they're online. And the staff is fine-tuning that document and will be prepared to bring that forward for consideration, for recommendation, for approval onto the city council. So we're looking at the date of June seventh to do that. So I would appreciate it this evening if you could continue this, this meeting to June seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Planning commission discussion. Anyone? Or suit, did he leave?
He can return. He was recused.
Okay. But did he go home, or is he still here for the-
Well, his laptop's still here, so hopefully.
Okay. Did you have anything for the planning commission discussion?
No.
Anyone else? Nothing for the planning commission discussion?
Nope.
All right, in that case, we will adjourn until June seventh. Thank you. You can adjourn.
Good job, man.